Um, only eleven of them, twelve of them or so are in the county section. The rest of it sit in Eureka and Nye County. So, but they're asking for funding to do the whole.
Two, three.
The whole turn off, yeah. Any questions?
Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Click.
Second, Mr. Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item six, discussion for possible action, the approval of minutes from the March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two Board of Energy meeting. Any additions, subtractions, or corrections?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Travis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Okay, we'll stay right on page three. We have a little later than we want, but it's a longevity timed item. It's the update on the White Pine Pump Storage Project. Item one is discussion for possible action, approval of the request for the White Pine County Border Commission to submit a letter to the Federal Emergency Regulatory Commission, FERC, in support of the draft license application for the White Pine Pump Storage Project, FERC project number one-four-eight-five-one. Gregory Copeland, program manager, wanna?
Chairman, commissioners. My name is Greg Copeland with R Plus Hydro. Thank you for the opportunity to give a little bit of an update on the project. Since Luigi Restar, our president, was here in January, there's been a few developments that we think that most of you are aware of. Every one of the committees should have received an email that would have notified you about filing of our draft license application, which would have dragged you through a link to our website, which has the entire, almost two thousand-page draft license application that's been filed with the Federal Energy Information. That draft license application is a non-formal process that is soliciting comments from stakeholder agencies. We have meetings with those stakeholder agencies, have had meetings, and are having meetings today with those stakeholder agencies to solicit comments back. Comments are due by May eighteenth, and those comments will be incorporated into what's called a final license application. The final license application will start the formal licensing process when it's filed with FERC in the third quarter of this year. That will trigger the FERC to actually start the NEPA process. And I know several commissioners are probably familiar with the NEPA process. So, you can expect that in the third quarter of this year. So, that's kind of where the licensing process is at. And so, we appreciate the support that has been expressed by the commission in the past. We appreciate the opportunity to have the commission express that support to the FERC as a part of the solicitation of comments during this draft license application process. With that said, there are a couple of other things that are happening this year. We are going to be doing, we had three bore holes to do last year. We got one of those done. And there has been some rumors around the community about the size of the bore holes that are done. And I heard one, which was that we were taking samples from the bore hole. It was twenty-foot diameter, and that's pretty invasive and a lot of impact. And so, what I brought was actually a core sample of what was done last year. So, if you can kind of see that this is a pretty minor, low-impact type of bore. The actual boreings themselves are retrieved and are stored locally here in a warehouse so that we can actually go back in. And if we need to, with the laboratory, full additional samples, there are any problems. They're in crates, they're stored here locally, they're in climate-controlled environments so that we can go back in and get them. The boring that will occur this year will be similar in size of the boreings. The back, the bore holes are actually backfilled, and their cap is sealed so that there is no visible evidence, there's no structural change to the actual round of bore hole. But I thought I would bring this in so you could see what the size of the bore hole is.
So, that's about three inches.
Correct. Yeah. And you're probably familiar with this too. This is for plans and drawings, right? So, it's right inside of that, so you can get a good, pretty good idea of what the size is. The plans for the board, the geotechnical this year, are going to be taking place between September first and October thirty-first. There is a window of time, a forty-five-day window, in which we are not restricted by seasonal restrictions from sage grouse, which we'll be able to do in the way to get that boring done. We've worked out a plan where we can get that done within that forty-five-day window. The front end, two weeks, is for seismic retraction work that's required and for mobilizing the equipment. We're working that out with Nevada Department of Wildlife and with BLM, we'll be able to get access to that, so we can do that. The plan that was, as we now have worked out, abandons any access from the Duck Creek Basin side. We will not be accessing either the bore hole or the final construction of the upper reservoir for the Duck Creek side. I want to repeat that. The access routes from the Duck Creek side have been abandoned for two reasons. One is environmental concerns. There are two sage grouse lakes that are located over there. There is greater impact to those sage grouse habitat and sage grouse lakes for the Duck Creek side than there would be otherwise. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that that is a primary consideration, that we're trying to accommodate for that environment, mitigate for those environmental impacts. As a result, we've been working on a plan to be able to access from the step-toe side for both the geotechnical work that will be done this fall and for eventually for the actual construction that occurs once we prove everything out, then it looks like it's going to move forward. That access this fall is a rather complicated plan because we have to deliver to the top of the mountain twenty thousand gallons of water a day in order to accomplish that boring. That's going to require us to be able to access up from the step-toe side with water, and it's going to be water up with water trucks, and then a pumping, a series of pumping stations that will pump that water up to the very top. It's a fairly complex exercise that we're going through. That is going to, that's going to be for that forty-five-day period and only for that forty-five-day period of time. It's temporary, it'll be removed once we're, once we're complete with that geotechnical work. So, you'll see a light at the top of the mountain during that timeframe. You'll probably hear some of the pumps that are operating during that timeframe, but I'm ensuring it's only for that forty-five-day period of time. And we think we'll be able to bore down the top of the mountain, down twenty-three-hundred feet into the mountain, be able to get all the information necessary to improve the project's viability by doing that. There will also be another bore hole when we dive down the flats, so that we have two boreings that will be taking place at the same time, and we'll be able to get this done as quickly as possible and be out of everybody's hair. So, anyway, that's kind of what we have on the horizon, short term, this fall. And I want you to be aware of the fact that we're not accessing the Duck Creek Basin side. That's probably the most important message I want to get across here today. Everything will be done from the step-toe side. We've worked out a elaborate plan to be able to make it happen. By the way, this is Kevin Baker. He's with R Plus as our Assistant General Counsel with R Plus, and he's accompanying me today. If you have any questions for either one of us about either of the letters for or what the plans are coming up for this hall.
I have. Go ahead.
Chairman, I have, I need to direct the conversation before the commission gets into the approval of the letter or the discussion of that, that's all right?
Yeah.
I wanted to invite Jeremy Drew to come up.
Sure.
And our consultant for environmental issues within the county, and I understand you guys are meeting later to talk about some stuff. I certainly appreciate that I was able to finally connect with Drew on my call this morning a little bit. He has some suggestive language change to one provision of the letter to address some of the stakeholders and our Water Advisory Committee and PLUAC that had some concerns as it relates to the environment and multiple use up for this project. So, I wanted to at least get Jeremy's input on this, his discussions, and some of his suggestions. I also want to signal that we have these conversations to Greg and R Plus. These conversations are really important to keep the public informed so that the project keeps moving forward. It's not, I'm not trying to signal to R Plus that we're pushing back on this project. We're still, we have a long timeline for development on this, several. There's going to be plenty of opportunity for public input, more, you know, at all levels, federal level, local level. But it's important that we repair any relationships that may have been compromised in the last couple of years, and it's important that we inform the public on what's going on. And then I have some input on economic development as it relates to environmental impact as well, before Jeremy gets going. And it's this. We generally support the mine in this county because it's a major economic driver, it's what, it's the lifeblood of this town, and there's definitely environmental impact for removing a mountain and digging down several thousand feet. Okay? There, anytime you put a pivot out in the middle of a field and it will grow off alpha, there's environmental impact. Anytime we approve anything for Ken Ross or Bald Mountain, there's environmental impact or transmission lines, environmental impact. But we often have to discuss that impact in trade of our economic development in our county. And economic development has been and will be our primary, most paranoid concern because we have to support the citizens' livelihood here as well. So, what we need is good, open discourse and understanding of that environmental impact is, hearing from our stakeholders, our ranchers, our people who live and hunt and recreate these mountains so that we understand clearly what the plan is at every stage, how we can best mitigate it, and we probably need to start looking at a development plan that can show the state that R Plus is going to have in the community as well. And have a document that we can pass out to the community and say, this is what we're doing to mitigate, this is what we're doing to put back in the community. And so, I'll be working with you guys on that. So, with all that said, you can't make it on without breaking eggs. Sometimes there's going to be environmental impact, but we need to evaluate the economic benefit as well. And this project has the potential to have a significant economic revenue stream for the future White Pine County to diversify our economy so that we can be resilient when the mine finally hits its end of life. So, I understand there's a lot of community discussion about this, there's some hurt feelings, there's been, we just have to, now Greg's on board now, he came in in the fall, and it's been a night-and-day difference with communication to him. So, if there's questions about this project, please contact me, I'm talking to the public. I can be liaison also with R Plus, we can address some of these things. With that said, I think the comments that Jeremy's going to provide for this letter are actually right on point, and so I wanted to hear from Jeremy to start.
Okay.
Well, good morning, commissioners. Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts, and it's great to be with you all in person here today. I was able to come out and attend the first meeting of the Natural Resource Advisory Committee yesterday evening, and of course, this particular project continues to be top of mind for that committee as it was with the previous rendition of the Water Advisory Committee and the PLUAC Committee. And I think the position that that committee has taken is trying to provide as much detailed information as possible to ensure that we can best balance that economic diversification with critical multiple uses and environmental impacts. We know that the location of the project is definitely a little bit of a challenge, and so we provided a lot of feedback to some of the baseline study plans last fall. Those have since been completed. The environmental report and attachment, I believe, is seventeen hundred pages. So, when the Natural Resource Committee met last night, they had not obviously had a chance to read through seventeen hundred pages, and they had some questions, including the question that was addressed earlier about the size of the bore holes that we're able to clean up. And I think they'll be an important committee to help move the dialogue forward. I think they would be very interested to know that access from the Duck Creek Basin side is being abandoned. I think that would be a tremendous help and something that we had, I think, suggested earlier in the process. So, with that, as background, I had two recommendations. One, the next Natural Resource Advisory Committee meeting is May tenth, which is before, obviously immediately before your first May meeting and before the deadline for comments. So, I might suggest to the project proponent that they provide an update to that committee as well to further dispel some of the concerns and issues and continue that open dialogue. And then, specific to the letter, my recommendation, and there's no magic to this other than to see if the county is interested, is in the last paragraph, the first sentence talks about the county's views of the project as a vital piece of the modernization of the electrical infrastructure. At that point, I would suggest a period with a new sentence that simply states, "The project location presents some challenges as relates to important multiple use and natural resource values," as defined in the county's public land policy plan, which is signed as subsection or footnote six, and that the county will remain engaged in the process in order to identify appropriate avoidance, minimization, and mitigation strategies to ensure that the project also aligns with the county's vision for good stewardship of local public lands. I don't think that's being unsupportive. I think what it's saying is, we're interested in remaining engaged to make sure we have a project that at the end of the day does the best it can to mitigate any potential impacts and alleviate the community concerns as best as possible. With that, I'm happy to take questions. I'm going to approve with Jeremy's additions.
I would second that.
I got one question for Greg. And it was, you brought up the abandonment of the Duck Creek. With your bore holes, because I don't want to see you guys run into the same problem we had last October, are you, the BLM is showing to us that the right-of-way on that railroad, that crossing that we were going at the end of industrial, they don't have jurisdiction over that. Are you going to be able to access the mountaintop over that, through industrial park and over that railroad crossing?
So, just to clarify what you just said. First of all, BLM did some research, and they determined based on a review of the original documents that were located in Denver, that the right-of-way that's under the historic heritage railway, which is the east rail, is a non-exclusive right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay? And we had a meeting with the BLM, the city, and with the railroad, and there was an acknowledgement that it is a non-exclusive right-of-way, and they don't have feasible ownership over the lands under that rail. And as such, we are in agreement, as far as I know verbally, that access will be allowed across normal and pre-existing crossings that exist on that rail, to be able to access to the top of the mountain and the other bore hole location, which will be accessing that two tracts on the west side of that rail line.
Wish we would have, I can't speak for the top law enforcement official in this room, officials, but when you exclude one member of the public but allow it open to the rest of the public, there's a problem. And also, when you obstruct public right-of-ways, there's a violation and arrest, so. All right.
Yeah, I simply wanted the rest of the board to understand the issues you had. We all were aware of it last year, and when you start there, third quarter, September, October, you're not going to run into those same types of problems where you have to shut down. And I think I just really wanted the board and the DA and everybody to understand that there's been some action and we're going to be okay.
From that perspective, yes.
All right.
There will always be challenges. I understand. We'll overcome those challenges when they come up.
That was the one though I really wanted to emphasize.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
I have one final question for you on this letter. Are, and this is for Jeremy as well, any comments that the Water Advisory Committee or PLUAC might have? Are we able to, are they able to send comments on this project or submit comments to FERC? Or is it best for us to wait to incorporate their comments on this letter and then pass, maybe table it, and then pass it again on the eleventh commission agenda after we review their comments? Or what is everyone's opinion on that?
So, the way this process works is, and I want to make sure this is clear also, that when the FERC initiates the NEPA process and the final license application, they will have a stakeholder consultation process, and everybody, everybody will have an opportunity to input in that process. The process we're in right now is specifically seeking for comments from the stakeholder agencies that we've been engaged with. But that doesn't take away from the fact that anybody who wants to provide comments can do that. And so, the process is for stakeholder agency consultation and input. But anyone, and the reason why we sent those emails out was for the opportunity for anybody who was notified about that, or anybody else for that matter, who wants to provide comments can provide those comments. So, I don't know, Kevin, you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, the purpose for the draft license application and the final license application is for good decision-making. So, we want a robust engagement with all stakeholders, with all agencies. We want to be able to incorporate that in our final license application. There is an application process, the FERC licensing of two years for a NEPA process, so the more information, the more feedback that we can get in the draft licensing application is important so that we can line that up for the agencies to make their final decisions in a good manner, so that it's legally defensible and so that stands to scrutiny that will be applied against it.
Okay, so, this letter with your changes, Drew, Jeremy, Jeremy Drew, sorry.
Give her one more.
It would address some of the concerns that were raised last night and then these meetings, for now. We can approve the letter, and then we also, they still have opportunity to provide input.
Yeah, and if I may, county manager, what we've done in the past is had document-specific comments that we've attached to letters like this. And so, what I could do between now and the next Natural Resource Advisory Committee is put together some of those, we can agendize it right, so they can have that feedback, and we could have, you know, document-specific comments back to you for the May eleventh meeting and provide it as a supplement or as an attachment or whatever the best process is.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify the process.
So, did you want to go ahead and approve this now with the FERC, the modification, or go ahead and table it until the next commission meeting?
I think we can approve it right now.
And then we add on to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we can add that in to it.
Yeah, so let's, anybody else got, let's try to go ahead and take an action on this item because we still have to.
With the modifications.
With the modifications, and then we still have to make a lot of.
With Jeremy's modifications.
Okay.
Chairman, you can provide comments every day from now until May eighteenth.
Gotcha.
Okay? Anytime.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get this letter, this.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, don't see that as a deadline of any sort from now until then. Nothing has to be associated with it.
All being said, and I think we're all okay, I'm just going to look for a motion to approve.
We can just call for a vote.
Yeah. Well, that's, can I, let's see. Let me see, let me get this. I'll ask for a motion to approve the letter, is that right, and then call for a vote? Is that okay?
We need a motion and second, we just need a vote.
Okay, now I'll look for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
A opposed, none, passion unanimous. Thank you very much.
Mr. Copeland, in the back is the chairman. The Water Advisory Board and PLUAC, our Public Lands Board, had their first meeting last night. Those two boards have been combined into our Natural Resource Board.
That explains a lot.
Okay.
I was looking all along.
That was, yes. So, that just took place, they had their first meeting last night. With that said, your willingness to go ahead and present to them, and Jeremy can see to it that there's documentation and stuff for their following meeting, or their next meeting, which will be.
May tenth.
May tenth, which is a Tuesday night, the night before the county commission meeting.
I'll be here.
Awesome. Okay, so if you wanted to, thank you so much for your help, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we'll go to page three, nine forty-five, which is proposed ordinance five-two-seven. This is a first reading, and it's for discussion only. Regarding the proposed ordinance five-two-seven, bill number four-point-one-three-five-two-zero-two-two, and ordinance updating and amending the applicable chapters of Title fourteen of the White Pine County Code, changing building and safety-related codes from the uniform standards to the national or international standards other than the uniform administrative code, and adopting an energy conservation code as chapter fourteen-point-three-zero, and an off-site modular and prefabrication construction code as chapter fourteen-point-three-four, proposed by Craig Peterson, the building official. Craig, are you here or are you on the phone? This is just the first hearing, it's for discussion only. Is there any discussion by the commission on this? We'll have another one at the next meeting, right, Mike?
James?
Yeah. Yeah, and if I can speak briefly on this.
Okay.
I was hoping Craig would be here to explain, but we work, our office is working in conjunction with Craig on this, and the commission already adopted the international building code, but in other areas of the ordinance, it refers to the prior building code, so we're just changing that language to, or requesting that language be changed to reflect the actual building code that we're operating under. And then I can't speak too much on the adopting the energy conservation code, that would be in Craig's bailiwick.
That's where I just have concerns, is adding more code is the last thing we need in this county, I want to say, so that part of it is what scares me. The rest, it looks like it's just language cleanup, which is fine, but fourteen-thirteen to fourteen-point-three-four, without having knowledge of that, very hesitant on.
I think some meetings with civil deputy and the building official, what's happening is, it's just about standards. When he goes to a site, if there's gaps or absences within the code that we have in the books, he has nothing to review or compare to the standards to as it relates to that stuff. So, being the first reading, this is just to propose to the community what we're looking at, including to us, to provide notice, and then a copy that will be at the clerk's office for review so we can look closer at those energy provisions. And then there'll be a public hearing at the, down the road, I don't know if it's the next one, the following commission meeting.
I haven't scheduled it yet, I wanted to see the outcome of this agenda item to see if there needed to be a second reading before an approval.
And at that meeting, there'll be a public hearing so that there can be some of these concerns that we're talking about flushed out, and parts of it may be passed and parts of it may not be passed. So, I think that's, this is more about that notice time, to make sure that our building inspector is here so he can explain why it is he's looking at.
And this is a first reading and it's discussion. James, do you have anything to add to this?
Nope.
Anybody else got anything? Travis voiced his opinion. So, if there's nothing else to move forward on, let's finish this particular item and just move on, just leaving it as a discussion item and move on to our next. Is that okay with you guys?
Sure.
Okay. So, we are now going to go to, it's discussion information only regarding the White Pine County natural resources and public lands issues track orders. Jeremy?
Well, Chairman, thanks again. For your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts. Just wanted to give you an update while I was in town. Again, it was great to see the Natural Resources Committee reconstituted last night and have their first meeting. You've got an outstanding group there, and we work with a lot of counties, and I think that group's going to be a tremendous benefit as the PLUAC and the Water Advisory Committee was kind of their predecessors. So, just a couple of quick updates, and some of them we touched on, and some of them is based on real-time information from last night. But as mentioned, Bald Mountain expansion, notice of intent is out, scoping comments are due May second. There's actually two virtual public meetings next week on that, on the nineteenth and the twenty-first. We already have a work order in place for that, so I will draft something and have it to Ms. Baldwin just under the wire, I'm sure, for support material for your next board meeting, through you, and possibly approved. So, we've got that coming up. We did an update last night from the Department of Wildlife, excuse me, on Cave Lake. They have or are imminently ready to release a bid on the dam work. They anticipate most of the work to be completed this year. They don't think they'll be able to get it all done. They gave us an example, the head gate for the outlet structure is like a nine-month lead time item. So, I don't know that they'll be able to get everything done this year, but they're anticipating a start of construction this year. The next one that we have coming up, the cross tie that we talked about coming in from Utah to Robinson is likely to come open for scoping in the next month or so. As we've discussed before, we're kind of in the crosshairs in White Pine County of a lot of new transmission projects. And BLM updated us last night that they have ten different applications for solar and wind projects along those various routes, so renewable energy is going to continue to be an item of focus, I think, for us. Just to mention on cross tie, that again, we'll have some scoping coming up soon, and as cooperating agency, we've already been providing input for them, so that should be a pretty smooth process. Pump storage, we just talked about, and I look forward to the update at May tenth, and we'll review that application and get some comments together for this board to consider on May eleventh. Quick update as it relates to sage grouse planning and BLM's version three-point-oh on that. They have not come out with anything since the scoping comments we provided. The state director did provide an update about three weeks ago to the state ecosystem program, which was good to hear. One of the big issues we have here in White Pine County, and we're not alone with that, is the BLM and the state of Nevada have different habitat maps. The BLM is going to try to work even ahead of the management plan update to synchronize the maps and adopt the state maps. So, hopefully, in months and not years, we'll all be working from the same map, which will be a tremendous benefit to projects. We've talked a little bit about BLM looking at a statewide resource management plan update. That is still in the works, but it's pending funding, so no new updates there. We learned from BLM last night that Green Link is. We learned from BLM last night that Green Link is still in the pipeline, that's the power line going from Robinson to the west, and it sounds like the timeline on that has been moved back about a year, so that's not quite as imminent as some of these other projects. We mentioned it before, but the next Natural Resource Advisory Committee will be May tenth here at five P M. Central Nevada Regional Water Authority is coming up in June in FOWM. Nevada Association of Public, Nevada Association of Counties, if you'll remember, I was wearing a couple of different hats, and we were providing support to.